I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am, good evening. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we're not live yet.
Oh, he gave me the countdown.
I know.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
I did it, still trying.
All right.
And if so, everything we've said will be streamed. Just one second.
So I don't have to start over?
If you want to hold for one second while we confirm.
Sure, take your time.
Thank you. All right, Facebook says starting, but it seems stuck, so we're gonna try again. Okay, let's try again in five, four, three.
Good evening and welcome to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting, Monday, February 8th, 2021. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Burke, I'm sorry, it's still not starting for me.
Oh, I'm just getting, I'm just practicing, no problem.
Apologize. Hi, everybody, give me one more second, I'm gonna reset everything.
Take your time. Isn't technology wonderful?
Tracy, while Matthew's finishing that up, you may want to rename yourself, I know I shared my link.
Okay, I'm doing a manual restart this time, so you will see the live indicator, but we will not be live yet. So wait until I give you a final countdown.
All right.
Sorry, everybody, it is, we're still having some trouble. I'm gonna keep, we'll get there, just be patient with me for another minute or two.
No problem, take your time.
Okay, we are ready, in five, four, three.
Good evening and welcome to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting. I now call this meeting to order, Monday, February 8th, 2021. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council's ordinance number 2020-093, adopted April 9th, 2020, and extended by ordinance number 2020-183, adopted August 20th, 2020, and by ordinance number 2020-232, adopted December 14th, 2020, and the school board's resolution approved on April 20th, 2020. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contained information on how individuals needing translation could provide, excuse me, could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be livestreamed for the public on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted on Board Docs. After roll call, we will state how many board members are participating in the roll call. Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Present.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Ms. Ritzy?
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, you have nine board members participating tonight, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Ms. Collins. We will now move into closed session. May I please have the motion read?
Madam Chair, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Subsection A, Subsection 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 is amended. I move that the School Board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session to consider the assignment, performance, salaries, and contract of specific school board employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorr. We're ready, is there any discussion? We are now ready for the vote, Madam Clerk?
Okay, Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ritzy?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
You are now enclosed.
Thank you. All right, we are done with closed session, we will now move forward, may we have a motion, please? I think Mr. Young has that.
Yes ma'am, my move that the Richmond School Board direct its clerk to call for a roll call vote of the board members, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Richmond School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Young, is there a second, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed?
Yes ma'am.
All right, Mr. Young made the motion, Dr. Harris Mohammed made the second, are you ready for the question, any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ritzy?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion was carried. Next item on our agenda, Item 3.01, take action on superintendent's employment agreement. In the chat.
Yes ma'am, Chair, Ms. Page?
All right, thank you, Ms. Page.
Yes ma'am, Chair, I would like to make a motion. I move that the school board with the superintendent's agreement will reappoint him as superintendent for Richmond Public Schools for the term of July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2025, upon the expiration of his initial term ending in June 30th, 2021, and that the school board chair is authorized to execute an employment agreement with the superintendent in a form approved by the parties and council.
Thank you, Ms. Page, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I saw Ms. Dorr.
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Mrs. Page to extend the contract to the superintendent for four years and seconded by Mrs. Dorr. Are you ready for discussion? Mr. Young, who do we have?
Madam Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right, please proceed, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, all that are, all those that are watching. I do have a statement, I have a comment that I would like to share slash statement with you all this evening as we are considering this motion for the superintendent's continued service with Richmond City Public Schools. How does this impact the division on the content, context, and contractual terms of the superintendent's contract? The past several weeks, the nine of us have endured constant and consistent feedback from voters, business owners, community leaders, students, teachers, staff, and others who directly or indirectly support Richmond City Public Schools. I appreciate the time that many of you took over the past several weeks to share your thoughts on the superintendent's employment contract with Richmond Public Schools. I personally and professionally thank you so very much. This process have, could have been clear for us and you to include during an open session, sharing with the public upfront what can and what could not be discussed regarding evaluate, an employee's valuation and employment status. To understand the professional norms of governance, we must accept and understand the direction. Much of that has been lost, and we must eagerly complete that important task as a governance team. As a 30-year educator, I have been astonished by the idea of being rushed to renew an annual contract at 250,000-plus benefits between 1 million to 2 point, to 1.5 million total over a four-year period. Without answers to some of the following is deeply concerning. One, categorize data into subgroups to identify areas of breakdowns in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Two, areas of growth and opportunity to increase teacher retention. Three, the frequency of requests from the board related to information necessary to make informed decisions being ignored or delayed. Four, clarity around the relationships between the cabinet members and our division staff, to include classroom teachers. Five, multiple occurrences of not following or being aware of RPS school board policies, et cetera. To effectively trade principals and building leaders, a district leader should have accepted the call to amble in the land of building leadership. We all love our students, yes we do, and our families. However, love and academic progress are not mutually exclusive, but should be mutually inclusive, as just having love alone would not move the needle of providing an effective environment for teaching and learning that produces positive student outcomes socially, emotionally, and academically. Superintendents must help principals and assistant principals become effective instructional leaders who know how to assist teachers with planning to teach and not teaching to plan. Ensuring that our top-level positions are filled with persons who are experienced and qualified is additionally critical. I am not certain that this is happening, time will tell. The National School Board Association and Virginia School Board Association governance training clearly articulates, school boards should use data to inform their decisions. If we do not want to use data to make decisions regarding our direct reports, then it will be difficult for us to ask that of our teachers. None of our teachers should receive a non-renewal because of their benchmark data, standards of learning data, or other instructional and assessment data given the current state of affairs. I felt assessment procedures and policies assessments, not just states, state test scores, could be seen as a direct correlation of misguided understanding to work, to working to assess student learning, excuse me, of failed instructional leadership, excuse me. School districts across the state and nation are still working to assess student learning loss with local level assessments in order to be prepared to meet their needs upon their return. We also have to do the same. If we are to grant a new four-year contract, I believe it is vitally important for us to hold the superintendent and cabinet accountable each day they are serving Richmond Public Schools as key leaders. It is necessary and important that our students and entire division receive consistency. However, consistency must be effective and efficient in providing social, emotional, and academic learning, even if it is necessary to modify based upon unique circumstances. That consistency cannot be consumed with political popularity, but with wisdom and humility. Two things help drive a school division into instructional success. Effective governance, that is the school board. Effective leadership, that is our superintendent. We need to work together, because we need both from you. I am committed to supporting effective governance and establishing SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound, which has not yet happened. Alongside with my school board colleagues that allow us to evaluate qualitatively effective leadership, not quantity. This previous rubric I received does not appear to have measurable outcomes. We cannot objectively and fairly measure how well someone is liked and how school board members quantify an A++ plus rating, which makes no sense to direct feedback of the work that has or has not been completed. Goals must be measurable, not likable. If we are going to ask our teachers and principals and assistant principals to be measured using SMART goals, that goes for the leadership in RPS also. We cannot afford to lose stu, our students and staff's faith. And surely, as I sit on this school board with an opportunity favored to me to serve, I will speak honestly and professionally to the mishandling of the division from top to bottom as a member of this governance team without apology. All our students deserve our leadership team in the central office to be knowledgeable of the standards of learning, not just the common core standards. How to identify areas of weaknesses and strengths and have or acquire the skills to, and abilities to do the following. Number one, increase the graduation rate. Number two, to decrease the dropout rate. Number three, increase our attendance rate. Number four, increase opportunities for our teachers, our teacher assistants and certified personnel to receive training that is supported by the division leadership. Number five, understand and demonstrate there is a difference between attendance and enrollment, which is ADM and IADA. Number six, understand that a budget include all monies contributed to the school division. Number seven, understand the true cost of an employee on the budget is salary and benefits. Number eight, identify the goals in the strategic plan that must be addressed through the professional development and provide a update to the entire school board on that professional development to include the behavior, the content, and criteria with 100% accuracy. I have been chosen to serve the RPS community and complete this work with the superintendent and my school board colleague. For us to complete the task at hand, which are many, we must be able to accept that this is a team effort. If Mr. Cameras fail, we fail, and I'm not about to fail. However, it is also important for the team to receive information and a timely manner in order to make informed decisions. As we move forward, I believe the team assembled is ready to assist, coach, guide, direct, support, push, applaud, dance with the superintendent, stand with the superintendent, and love and high expectations for performance and accountability to get the work done. I will always, regardless of anyone else, stand with a GPA, grace, poise, and a positive attitude. I cannot sit here and not keep children in the forefront of my mind. I have contemplated over this decision, I have went into deep thought over this decision, and actually believe, I have come to a decision that in order for our division to move forward, to see the success that our children deserve in this division, that our children deserve. It is not about grown folk, it is about children. I am willing and able, out of professional grace, because we have all received grace, to support the superintendent with a four-year contract and hold him accountable based on the SMART goals that as a governance team we build together to ensure that our division is successful. Last thing, in order for our division to be, to move successfully, we must give direction and support back to our building principals. Testing must be back into the building. They must oversee their testing and assessment. That cannot continue the way it has continued without principal input. School board colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on where I stand. I look forward to working with all 10 of us to support this division and move forward. And if there are any questions about my statement, it is going to be in the minutes for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, is there anyone else, Mr. Young listed to speak on this motion?
Yes ma'am, next Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Ritzy.
All right, Ms. Dorr?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say as well, it was incredible to see the thousands of parents, teachers, and community members from across the district that came out in support of a four-year contract for Jeezy and Cameras, and I really want to thank everyone for weighing in on behalf of our RPS children. Some notable and measurable quantitative achievements, as measured under our strategic plan that I am personally proud of are as follows. One, Goal One accreditation, while we did not have accreditation last year, we had one new school accredited in 2018, 2019. Graduation, we stopped rubber stamping diplomas, and even with that, we saw a 0.9% year-over-year increase. Academics, our maps last year showed a 4% improvement in math and a 1% improvement in English. As noted, or as well, the schools that piloted our new math curriculum showed as high as a double-digit improvement in some areas. Our teacher retention was flat year-over-year. Equity, our honors enrollments are up and AP classes have increased by 50%. Teacher and staff satisfaction has increased by 10% year-over-year. We saw an increase in fall membership by 449 students. We've increased attendance since the superintendent took office by 3.2%. We increased, or we decreased days of suspension per 100 students from 141 days in 2017, 2018, to 92 days in 2019, 2020. And we saw a 33% increase in our operating budget funding and provided new capital in our school budget to build three new schools. A secure four-year contract will help us do the very important work, including safely reopening schools in a way that makes sure we don't leave the kids that need us the most, leave, that need us the most behind, and the other 40 action items in our dreams for RPS strategic plan. This contract allows the board to hold the superintendent accountable to our strategic plan, and four years enables us to push the envelope and build a better RPS together, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr, Ms. Ritzy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a statement I'd like to make.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Let's start it here. To quote Chance the rapper, who paraphrases scripture, "The first step pleases the Father might be the hardest to take. Make no mistake about it, this one step I'm taking has been extraordinarily difficult, but it is time to put on my big girl pants and govern to the best of my ability. That is what I swore before God to do. The Cameras administration has its fans. They should feel particularly pleased that there are those who are satisfied with their performance thus far. Many cite an increased public presence and improved consistent communication as key achievements of this administration. Many have also been pleased with the current administration's handling of the pandemic. These are improvements, to be sure, which I wholeheartedly agree should be recognized and celebrated. There are also more quiet voices who cite issues with equity, who feel largely silenced, who are less than content with having others speak for them, tell them what's best for them, who want to speak for themselves but carry a tremendous amount of fear when attempting to do so. If I hadn't been elected to stand or sit before you today, I would most likely count myself among the latter. There are things as a parent, as a community member, I wonder, why are there so many fewer black students attending some of our specialty schools than there were 10 years ago when my elder son attended? Why do some of my friends and other employees of RPS report being pushed out or being forced to work in hostile environments? Disconnected from participating in and working for a school system their mothers and fathers helped to build? Why were there 121 arrests in our schools last year? Many at the middle school level, all at schools with vastly majority-minority populations? Why does there seem to be a push toward recognizing exceptionalism and elitism rather than offering of a sincere and substantial hand-up to the marginalized? Today, for example, Franklin Military is very close to being an elite institution, whereas years ago, it was a place where children who faced trouble went to, to find pride. My late younger brother, God rest his sweet soul, attended there some years ago and found a pride in hope in himself that our family had never seen. As it is today, my brother would never have begun to qualify for acceptance into Franklin Military. There are still problems with how RPS serves those who have needs outside of what we deem normal or unproblematic. I wonder why we still have to wait a full year to get data on teacher retention? We know that an experienced faculty is so very valuable. Well, we know that representation matters. Where decisions are being, where are the protocols, I'm sorry, where are the protocols for more authentic community participation and engagement when major decisions are being made? Why aren't teacher and parent voices the ones leading the discussion about curricular choices, extended year school, building level needs, including capital updates and renovations, and now the imminent return to face, to face instruction? Anyone who wrote to tell me that they voted for me must know where I stand on such issues. All of the forums, interviews, public statements I released never once wavered from message. We should want to work to see measurable improvements for all of our children, all of them. And we shouldn't rest until we see significant movement in that direction. No one, to my knowledge, ever wanted Mr. Cameras and his administration to leave. We just wanted more time to see them get closer to helping us achieve our dreams for RPS, our children's dreams. Two to three years post-pandemic to see if the ship indeed will be righted for our children, to give us time to work together to achieve the benchmarks and see where to go from there. This instead has become a proverbial political line in the sand. So now that the line has been drawn, I must stand on the side of it, of it that will allow me to go to bed, knowing that I have indeed done my best to serve, serve the people and the children of the city of Richmond, so help me God. However it ends up, let's all work together to make our children's dreams come true. Let's show them the same urgency that this, this decision right here seemed to garner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ritzy. Mr. Young, do we have anyone else?
Yes ma'am, Ms. White, then Ms. Page, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. Ms. White?
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. I'd like to thank you all for the many letters that I had, have received. Either from second district or from other districts, uh representing all of the childrens. But I'd like to make a comment also today with my colleagues on the process of um Mr. Cameras' contract. As she said, no one wanted to see Mr. Cameras leave. I want to see Mr. Cameras succeed. I want to be able to see Mr. Cameras give us his best performance in this contract. As a mother of two, I've watched him on the other side. Now this time I need to uh rate him on his performance. I am for the betterment of RPS. My expectations are high. I am a woman of integrity, I take my oath very seriously. This is my third time taking an oath in my life. I've had a short time to observe Mr. Cameras. I need to see how Mr. Cameras is going to perform his role as superintendent. I have seen all the evaluations, the dream for RPS strategic plan. No data to match the metrics. See, I don't evaluate anyone on their personal feelings or your personal feelings. I will evaluate you on your job performance. I need to see things done. See, when I march to the Capitol every year. It's not because we have low graduation rates. It's not because we have high absences. It's not because we have high suspensions. And it's not because we got one more school accredited after years of trying. I march because it's for the children of RPS and we need those funds, all children. It's, it's all about all children and equity, and that's what I'm looking for. So at the end of the day, no matter what no one thinks of what's going on, we, we did compromise. As a board. And at the end of the day, I am looking for accountability. And I know we can be better at RPS as long as we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say, I want to thank all the families and students. That we have seen feedback from um sharing their thoughts. What's in feedback from the eighth district as well as all over the city. Because I value the input. And I take this, I take this very seriously. Because we are impacting the lives of young people. And stability, continuity is very important. And I just want to say that we will hold this administration accountable. For student success by tracking data. The outcomes that have been identified in the dreams for RPS. We are on the right track, but we must deal with the facts. Because we all know, this work continues. So let's continue to work together because our children, our young people, they deserve it. They deserve better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So uh if there's one thing that we all agree on, um universally so. And this isn't something that happens very frequently in Richmond. Is that uh this is a time when um stability is of critical importance. Right now is simply not the time to start over. I also believe that this was not the time to engage in an all or nothing debate. When we have so much at stake as a district. I want to express my gratitude to the NAACP and uh Richmond Crusade for Voters. Both organizations have a long, rich history of engagement to support the progress of our school district. Um, both organizations weighed in in support of a two-year renewal, highlighting the need to move the needle on graduation rates. And other really critical metrics. Um, without question, we have uh serious work to do. Performance aside, the terms of the contract also really impact governance. Um, and to that end, I would have voted in favor of either a two or a three-year renewal. Back in the fall, I felt uh incredibly uncomfortable. Making the decision to renew the contract on the eve of an election. Decisions regarding the employment of the superintendent. It's one of the most important responsibility of this governing body as defined by the Code of Virginia. And so I felt that making that decision ahead of the vote was a disturbance to the electoral process. Now, I cannot speak for my colleagues that have been newly elected to the board. But it is overwhelmingly clear to me that tasking a new board with making this decision. In their very first month in office is not the ideal. And so today, by adopting a four-year contract, we are setting ourselves up to repeat this very same thing again. And yes, this is a decision that is all about our students and I do not think that this serves the best interest of our kids. All that said, although I'm not in favor of voting, um I'm not in favor of the terms of the contract this evening. I fully respect the will of the board and I'm hopeful that we can move forward. As we continue to lead with empathy and appreciate growth that stability can bring. I'm optimistic that we can make up losses and teach retention. That we will fund initiatives that we feel assured there's going to be money for the next year and the year after that. And as we consider reopening and as we're thinking about our school calendar. We keep the impact of these choices on our family and staff top of mind. So um thank you all for the letters, thank you all for your engagement. I want to see you all stay engaged as we continue this work. Um, and to that end, I look forward to seeing uh my colleagues again tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Um, Mr. Young?
Yes ma'am, uh Ms. Jones and then yours truly.
All right, Ms. Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening to everyone and thank you for all of your comments to my colleagues and to everyone watching. And I want to thank all the people who wrote in to us, sent us emails and let us know your concerns. I don't have a full uh disclosed statement, but what I would like to say is. While I'm listening to everyone and I agree with some of the comments as it relates to. You know, just continuing to hold our administrative, administration accountable. The one thing that stands out to me is healing. And I feel like for so many years, Richmond Public Schools, um the teachers, the families, the students, the staff. We're all trying to do the right thing for our children. And while we're trying to do the right thing, we also um want, may want to keep in mind. You know, just the, the uh. The disproportionate, you know, um issues that have affected our most vulnerable communities for so many years and for so long. And as we work together with the community, with the administration, that is something that I think is going to be very important. That we do not continue to operate in silos, that we continue to listen. That we understand that communities are hurting, that they are grieving. And that they need to be able to relate to what is being presented to them because a lot of it is new. And it's information that they are not really aware of. And so we have to be mindful um when we're implementing things and we're, you know, pushing out new initiatives and new agendas. How can we work together to provide a healing um to the community, to the students, to the families? And um I do think that it will also take, you know, a more of a solution-based approach. Versus, you know, this one is over here doing this, this one is over there. How do we continue and begin to work together to provide solutions? It's a lot of um things that have been addressed. Um, I personally have been in the seat all of, I want to say maybe today, what, thirty-nine days? So I'm still learning, I'm being open to that, but I'm also um willing to. Um, just really think about what it is that we need to do as a school board. I appreciate my colleagues and all that has been shared, but we also need to be mindful. Um, just how do we reconcile, you know, the past? How do we reconcile all the things, resources not being distributed amongst communities? How do we be honest about those things and really um work towards being a better um district as a whole? Um, I think that um as far as the learning loss goes, that is going to be huge and how do we prepare for that? Um, how do we allow, I think it might have been my colleague, Ms. Rizzi, that talked about um folks really being able to. See, I don't consider it um complaining, it's feedback. And it's the feedback that allows us to be better. So really taking all the feedback that we are hearing throughout this process. And come to the table and see how are we going to be better? I support the administration, I support us moving forward and doing all that we can to empower our communities. But more importantly, our young people, because this is what this is all about. And getting them to be excellent and exceptional education. Um, and that's what I'm looking for in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones, so much. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, my support for Jason Cameras should come of no surprise to anyone. Since he was a candidate for the job little more than three years ago and his resume and accompanying application for the job was. Was literally, no exaggeration, was literally the very last of seventy-five that I, that I reviewed. Remember sitting in City Hall on the seventeenth floor, I knew that he had the right stuff. And my support for Jason Cameras this evening uh is, and it has been. Contingent on him being the big, bold transformative leader that he has been for three years. I look forward to him continuing to do that for the next four years. And uh, and I look forward to him continuing to in, to introduce big, bold, transformative plans like. Like year-round, like year-round school. What uh, what is more, I should add that uh Jason and I sometimes disagree. That's well documented and, and I think that uh, I think that is healthy and it's productive uh for Richmond Public Schools. I suspect we'll continue to disagree on, on some high-profile issues, but it should never be misinterpreted as a lack of support. Uh, for him and for the administration. I look, fully look forward to working with him for the next four years and continuing to introduce that, that radical reform like year-round school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Young, is there anyone else? I think everyone has had an opportunity to speak.
I believe it is your opportunity, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so very much. To our parents, our students, our support persons in the city of Richmond. Thank you so very much for this opportunity. As everyone knows that I am in support of this administration. We have no other choice but to go up, but to move up to the next level. We have no other choice but to be held accountable, the superintendent and each of us as board members as well. So there's only one way to go and that's up. Anybody that knows me, I don't like to be at the bottom of anything, all right? And our children, I am so pleased with the amount of input we've received from our children, that says a lot. I just want that good energy to continue. I want people to continue to be involved, continue to speak up, continue to be a part of the solution. Because it, it has to be a solution. As stated by one of my colleagues, we must do better. And the time is now, right now. So I thank everyone for their support overall. I'm looking forward to the next four years and um. Let's get ready and just do the math, do the math. We have no other choice, do the math. So, we can get back to the motion at hand. Which was made by Mrs. Page to renew the superintendent's contract for four years. And it was seconded by Ms. Door. Madam Clerk, if there's no other discussion, we're ready for the vote.
Yes ma'am. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, my dear colleagues. Mr. Cameras, would you like to have a comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. To you and to Vice Chair Young and to the entire board, I just want to express my profound gratitude to you all. I, as I think you know, love our students and families and staff very much. And serving as superintendent here has been the greatest honor of my life. And I'm overjoyed that I'll have the opportunity to continue serving for the next four years. I want to be clear, I'm the very first person to say that we have an enormous amount of work to do. And I'm not just talking about getting beyond COVID, I'm talking about achieving every single one of our dreams for RPS goals. And I want you to know that I'm boundlessly optimistic, I remain so about our ability to do so. I'm not gonna lie, it's not going to be easy. But I'm certain there's nothing we can't achieve if we all work together. And I am eager to do exactly that. After all, we don't have any choice, our students are waiting. And so again, on behalf of myself and my family, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Now let's get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Excellent congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to be addressed, any announcements? If not, please be mindful that tomorrow night, six o'clock, we will continue with our work session on the budget. No further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.